For the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Thank you. Got a motion by Aaron, second by Schmidt. Sean, we call a roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, we'll move into our first agenda item. We've got discussion and board action regarding courthouse expansion to include a jail facility. The resolution is in your share drive. It's for bonding not to exceed $113,700,000. So the first thing I'm going to do, I know we've got a lot of folks in the audience, I'm going to start with public input on this agenda item. So if there's anyone from the public that'd like to come up and tell us what you think about this resolution in particular, I'm not going to address the other ones right now. Now would be the time to do that.
I live in Canton, South Dakota. I'm a member of the Citizens Task Force on Courthouse and Jails. I wanted to remind you that the four citizens, three of whom were opponents on the last jail go around, have now become proponents of doing both the jail and the courthouse at the same time. They prefer that it be on a 30-acre standalone site, which is to the west. I want to remind all of you what happened in 2006 when you built this addition. And four of you voted to build it. There was no election. It wasn't referred. It got built. The levy was 25 cents a thousand on that, and with growth, the $6.5 billion worth of growth that you've had since you built this addition, the 25 cents has now become 7.5 cents. And we anticipate something similar is going to happen if you bond for the entire project here. You've had 14% growth on annual, average growth since 2006. That's a little over $6.25 billion worth of new growth. Through this process, there have been certain things that you've asked to happen. One of them is Commissioner Aaron's that said, "I want to see public meetings to be part of the process." And I'm going to tell you, we've had public meetings, and public meetings, and public meetings. And at those public meetings, we've come away with the sense that the folks, voters, want you to get this done, and they want you to do it right, and they don't want you to come back and do it again. You will see in the final proposal that you are solving, in our opinion, three problems. And first is to build the courtrooms, which you need to solve. The second is to accommodate the sheriff's office, and the third is to build the jail. I believe it's not going to get any cheaper next year, or the year after that, or the year after that. If you're going to lock in a price, now's the time to do it, and we would respectfully think that you, or request that you do that. Jim Schmidt came out, or Commissioner Jim Schmidt, excuse me, came out with an op-ed in the paper, and one of the lines said, "The time is now to solve the problem before crisis turns to catastrophe." And I know, Commissioner Schmidt, you were talking about the courtrooms, and I'm going to tell you that you were also talking about the jail. And visiting with Tom Grimmon yesterday, and Commissioner Gibbons, I want to thank you for sitting down and participating in that, I learned that you have been discussing building a jail since 2001. I didn't know that. And you've had, well, a little over 20-some years to figure out how you're going to do it and to do it right. You've assembled the teams necessary to do it, and you can make a decision. The last time I was here, I suggested that we can't kick this down the road anymore, we can. And I'm going to suggest that again today. I don't see a way around doing everything at one time. Government's job is supposed to be roads, and bridges, and infrastructure that works, and public safety. Public safety is courthouses, and sheriffs, and prosecutors, and jails. And if you don't have the three, it doesn't work. And we need to accommodate all of those offices that I've talked about, and you can't do this piecemeal, and we are respectfully asking that you do it now and do it all at one time. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a question. When the Citizens Group was meeting, and it was coming to a conclusion, and a recommendation was made, was there any talk of any more data that you felt like you needed to gather?
The only data piece that I think would be beneficial is a projection on what's going to happen with the debt, as the debt goes down. And I realize that someone's not going to sit and try to predict the future. I understand that we can have poor economic times where the growth isn't going to be that good, but the approach that you've come up with, the bonding, has been very conservative, and it's been at 2% growth. So the piece I'd like to have, I don't think I can get anybody to stick their neck out and say, "This is what, that, the number today is going to be 10 years from now for each individual homeowner."
All right, thank you.
I think you guys have, I guess, you threw me a softball. I think you guys have beat it to death. I don't think you need any more debt. I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention, Madam Chairman.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions for Mr. Nelson?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Commissioner Landine. Rachel Rasmussen, current sitting Circuit Court Judge, primarily stationed here in Lincoln County. And I have been in Lincoln County now full-time for the past three years. While I have been here, obviously, there's been quite a bit of growth, and quite an issue with courtroom space. This afternoon, we will be using all three courtrooms that are available here in Lincoln County. And had two jury trials not folded or been continued, we would not have a place to hold them. So we often bank on things continuing. So obviously, as you know, courtroom space has been an issue. And as we go forward, we will be seeking an additional magistrate court judge for the Second Judicial Circuit that will be stationed here in Lincoln County part-time. And the year after that, our numbers are such that we will likely be seeking an additional Circuit Court Judge for Lincoln County to be stationed primarily here, as I am, to continue to deal with the rising Lincoln County cases. Obviously, I am a Circuit Court Judge. I'm also a lifelong member of Lincoln County. So I play a little bit of a dual role here in my comments, but these are comments qualified, obviously, as my position as a Circuit Court Judge. In addition to my roles here, I do the daily bond reviews, which means anyone who's been arrested, I see them every day, and I set their bond. Anyone who's coming before me for any felony cases, I see all of those. I set their sentences. When Sheriff Swenson spoke recently to you and described the issue that he will have coming up in the near future with jail space, that directly impacts what I can and cannot do. If I do not have a place to put someone on bond reviews, I'm at a loss as to what to do. When someone comes before me on a crime, and it appears for public safety that they may need to be held on a bond, where would I put them? That's the concern from my end, serving here as the criminal Circuit Court Judge. I would encourage you to, as a citizen of Lincoln County, I would encourage you to think long-term, and do it once and do it right, so that you don't come back to, again, me as a taxpayer in Lincoln County as well, in another three years and say, "We have a catastrophe at this point in time, and nowhere to put prisoners, no courtroom space in 10 years," something like that. And would encourage the Commission, in whatever you decide to think, in the long-term. And I'd be open for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions for Judge Rasmussen? All right, thanks.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? I know TIGR Group is here. We've got Colliers here. Any of you folks want to come up and say anything at this point about this project? All right. Any commissioners have any questions for any of those folks? All right. Anybody else want to speak on this issue? All right. If not, I'd consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I would offer a motion to approve the resolution to issue the bonds for this new build.
All right. Is there a second for discussion? All right. If not, motion fails. We'll move on to item two on our agenda, which is also regarding the courthouse expansion. Does not include a jail, does not include moving the sheriff's office, as I understand the current presentation. And I do have a couple of questions on the 53, or, excuse me, 54-8 is the resolution that I'm asking to bond on. And I'm not sure which of you would be the best one to ask, but is the 54-8 a six and two? Is it six courtrooms with a two, or is it a four with a two? It's a four with a two. So again, I'll ask if there's anybody from the audience that wants to come up, for the public, to talk about this matter, things that haven't already been said. Now would be the time to do so. Hearing none, seeing none. I'd consider a motion on Agenda Item Two.
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I am disappointed we didn't get a second to discuss on the first motion. Unfortunately, I'm not able to support this motion, because I do believe it is too short-sighted. We have lost opportunity in years. As Larry Nelson reminded all of us, we've been talking about a lot of things, including a jail, since 2000, excuse me, 2001. Our situation expanding exponentially every year on these issues, and delaying any aspect of it is only a detriment for our future generations, and hopefully, there's a reconsideration to revisit that before we approve this. We'll see. Thank you.
All right. I too am not happy that there wasn't a second on the first motion, but on the first agenda item. But we are, we've got what we've got. So I do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the commissioners, or is there any questions that anybody has for any of the folks in attendance today?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
These votes are never easy. And what, looking to the future, I don't think there's a commissioner up here that does not recognize that at some point in time, this county will need a jail. We're not blinded by that. But as I tried to indicate, maybe it is a cliche, sometimes a half a loaf is better than no loaf at all. And what we face here is the idea that if we do nothing, the court system will take action, and rightfully so. They should do that, to dispense justice. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this situation, and we have talked about a jail for a long time. But what motivates me is the fact that our most pressing problem at the present time is not providing the court system with adequate court space to dispense justice. And that was what we formed a committee for when we first started. And I thank the members of that committee for their dedication, and their time, and their devotion, and their enthusiasm, because they have spent countless hours traveling and meeting with us. But as I look at the broad picture, and when I look at 100 and whatever million dollars versus 54 million, I think about the average taxpayer, and Larry, you can, you know, we can find statistics that will probably justify just about anything. But on the other hand, we are faced right now with the most unpopular time in the world, because we've got 7% inflation. We have the highest real estate taxes around, and that's not due to the county, that's due to the market out there. So when you try to balance the situation of putting a jail, no jail, meeting the needs of the court system by providing a justice center that would do that, and in doing so also alleviate some of the pressure within our administration building, it made sense to me to have this situation, that we would take a half a loaf, and we will contend with the future. Now, we jostle back and forth about jail time. Presently, we do have a contract with Minnehaha County. Presently, they are able to accommodate our needs for incarceration. They are opening up another 200-bed addition. Now, how long that will take, how long that will be, we don't know. I don't know, because we can, you can get garnos down here to do that. There is also legislation that is going to be pending in our state legislature that will call for kind of a jail, regional jail concept. And it has some, we reviewed this yesterday on how that would work. And it is a work in progress. I'm not going to say, I think, rightfully so. Judge Hauman, when you asked the question, "Will it pass?", that's a good question, because I don't know that they've solidified anything. So what I'm encouraging commissioners to do is to vote for this situation, move us off the dime, take care of our immediate problem out with courtrooms, alleviate space here, provide a facility where you can add a jail when it is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion amongst the commissioners?
I have a question. I'm not sure which.
Go ahead.
Who might be able to answer it.
Go ahead.
The question is, is by delaying the jail or not being part of the initial, I know that at a minimum, we have to add holding facilities. What are the additional costs that we have to implement into this that will not be, oh, how should I say, extra, because we're not building it all together at one time? And while I think about that, absolutely, Commissioner Schmidt, we have to do something. I hope that we had had the conversation for the whole site, because there are some costs that will be incurred because we're splitting it. But let's not fib to ourselves or the taxpayers. We're paying to build a court, or jail currently, and have been. Our numbers are down by testimony here by a judge that if they don't have a place to put people, it's difficult to, their hands are tied. Our case numbers are jumping, but our people incarcerated are going down. Extrapolate that if you can. The situation is not going to get better for us. It hasn't gotten better in the, just in the two years. The opportunity is now, at a minimum, let's trust the taxpayers, let's put it in front of them. Let them make the decision, if we're uncertain as to what they think. But I think it does need to be all at once, and it does need to be today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, thank you. Just have a couple of questions first. Couple procedural ones for staff. First of all, is this resolution referred to taxpayers for an election?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Gibbons, question for you. The motion that I seconded, that we're discussing, are you contemplating, under your motion, where the site or the location of this construction would take place?
I'm under the understanding it would be the Greenfield Edition.
Okay.
And it would be option number three, which was 54,800,000.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody?
I'll just make a few comments, Madam Chair. I understand that today's vote simply to authorize the expenditure of money to be able to pay for this. Even though I did second it, I'm going to vote against it. Think a tax increase of this magnitude needs to be referred to taxpayers, number one. I think if the project is worthy, taxpayers would vote for it. Number two, we need to build on a site ready to build, and that is the courthouse or adjacent to the courthouse here in downtown Canton. That eliminates our acquisition cost. It also reduces our building site cost. We did have our architect or builders tell us that if we build here, it is scalable and buildable. I'd prefer to keep dollars downtown in existing businesses, as opposed to hoping or wishing that new businesses would grow up around the proposed courthouse at the Greenfield site. I also think that in terms of our timetable, we could start much faster, or I would hope that we could start much faster, as opposed to having to deal with negotiating and dealing with the new Greenfield site. I also think there'd be less maintenance cost. A word about the jail. I am not supportive of a jail, not now, and not into the near future. Regionalization is the way that South Dakota is moving. Not every county deserves or needs to have its own jail. I went and testified in front of the legislature, in front of their jails committee. I also listened to all of their testimony. Not every county has their own jail. And here in Lincoln County, we have a workable system or model where we partner with Minnehaha County. Recently, myself and Commissioner Schmidt went to a presentation with the Minnehaha County JDC, and what I learned with the Juvenile Detention Center is that it services 16 counties in South Dakota. It's just not feasible for every county to offer every service to every citizen. South Dakota is a low-tax, low-wage state. That means we like less government, and we want government delivered more efficiently. We're able to deliver effective, efficient services when we partner with our neighbors. That is the South Dakota way of doing things. We can look to our neighbors to the south, to the northwest, northeast, excuse me, and to the east. They have property taxes, they have sales taxes, they have income taxes. All of those tax revenue streams allow them to do things that we in this state can't do. We've made a policy decision, year after year after year in this state, not to adopt an income tax, and not to allow counties to have access to sales tax. As a result of that, it means we need to partner with our sister counties, we need to look at regionalization, we need to come to the understanding that there's nothing wrong with sharing and partnering. And that's how we can deliver more effective, efficient services for constituents. We do it with JDC, we presently do it with our jail. I've heard some people say with regard to construction of a jail, "Well, if you had those dollars, you could build your own." Well, it's not like having a mortgage with your house where you build equity. You don't build equity in government buildings. Once the money is spent, it leaves the taxpayer's pocket, and it goes into the pockets of those who provide the services. We don't build equity. And so what I would propose is that now and into the future, we continue the lasting partnership we've had with Minnehaha County for the delivery of jail services. So for that reason, and because I believe that consolidation and regionalization is the way of the future in South Dakota, and it needs to be, is that there is no necessity for a Greenfield site. There will be a necessity to offer courtrooms, though, because I do not foresee our legislature changing the location of where court or jury trials will take place. But 30-some counties in South Dakota do not have jails. We have a well-worn correctional system in this state where we move prisoners around. Some would say it's not ideal, but it's a balance. It's a balance between being a low-wage, low-tax state, and not allowing counties to have access to sales tax.
Commissioner Aaron's.
That would allow them to build these projects.
Commissioner Aaron's, you were the chair of the Citizens Advisory Group, were you not?
That's correct.
And how many people were on that group?
I think we had 12 or 13.
And isn't it, is it fair to say you invited those folks and particular individuals to be on that group because you valued their opinion?
They volunteered to serve on it. They weren't invited.
Okay. And they're, I guess what they came up with at the end, I think unanimously, other than you, was to add a jail.
That's not true. We did not take a voice vote on a jail. We took a voice vote on a six-by-two courtroom option. The jail was not part of our consideration. So the jail issue, we did not discuss jail numbers, we didn't discuss prisoner numbers, we didn't take testimony or witnesses with regard to jail. We only, the scope of the committee was only to discuss courtroom options.
All right. With that, I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the public that would like to come up and speak.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
First of all, my motion, I really do feel this, this does meet our immediate needs, and at the same time, lays the groundwork for the future. And I think it's a logical choice. I think that you have to realize this is something that is much more affordable for taxpayers at this particular time. I think Commissioner Schmidt kind of laid the groundwork there of some of the expenses that we're all experiencing. And I think it does show that we do need to help and make sure that our criminal justice system, particularly our judges and our courtrooms, that their needs are met. Thank you.
Do you think, do you think that those courtrooms need jail space? I mean, if we're going to have more courts and more judges, doesn't necessarily make sense that we need somewhere to put prisoners?
I think time will probably determine, and data will determine, then what needs to be done after our courtrooms are built.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I just want to bring to the attention and for public deal that the draft legislation for regional jails is being written, and I happen to have the draft copy. And the main thrust of this legislation would be that counties would set up a regional jail authority, okay? And then people, we would appoint, we, the commission, would appoint trustees to that jail authority. And then this where, this is where the hook comes in. And then this where, this is where the hook comes in. That jail authority is then given the ability to levy a tax to build a facility for incarceration. So the question is, will that pass the state legislature? I don't know. But it says specifically in here that they can levy up to a two-dollar limit. So they have, they put this in. Now, I'm sure this is, I'm sure that representatives or senators, our Representative Otten will have this, and Boland will have this, and our own representatives. But what this does is it takes the responsibility or the ability of commissioners to make that decision and gives that to a regional jail authority. That is the thrust of this. So when and if we would say this, given this legislation here, they could make that decision, the authority that we have established. So that's just for information purposes. There's other details, and I'll be happy to share this with Larry or with any of you that wanna look at this thing, so.
Thank you for that. Anybody from the public wanna speak?
Betty Otten, four-six-seven-eight-seven-two-seventy-third Street, N.T. I just want to correct some information that came from one of the commissioners up here about the courthouse improvement committee. We did at the end of that summary do exactly what was stated earlier. However, we also got together after that, when nothing was being done, the citizens committee got together. And we met and decided that we were very short-sighted in what we had come up with at the end. And that we figured that we were short-sighted, and we started doing all of our homework. We went and we toured jails. We did all of the other things together. And we are a hundred percent in agreement that, yes, originally, we said that we didn't want a jail. But after we realized that we were so short-sighted, after we did our own research, we've come together and we've been before you many times and said, yes, we need to put this jail on, and we need to do it now. Do it all at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak before we take a vote on this? All right. I know there was a question asked, and it was holding cells versus jail cells and the cost difference. Because I think the, what we're bonding for now includes holding cells. If a jail was attached, that would obviously kind of be somewhat of a cost savings, at least on the courthouse side of it.
Yeah. Dave Derry, representing Henry Carlson Construction. I guess Commissioner Poppins, if I understood your question correctly, you were wondering what impact from cost would it be to separate these two projects. Is that correct?
My question's regarding to, is there duplication? Is there costs that are necessary by splitting the two that could be foregone if it was combined? I know we're including holding cells at a minimum to compensate for the fact that we don't have a jail adjacent to it that could act as those holding cells, so.
So the short answer to that is, there would be some savings. Would not be substantial. The bigger part of the savings would be, if the jail were deferred at a later date, would be the inflationary factor on the cost of the jail. And if you're looking at a fifty-million-dollar jail, and if you, if we set a five percent inflation, you know, that's two and a half million dollars a year. And so it would be a bigger impact, would be the delay of the jail. Did that answer your question?
It gives me some groundwork. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I would like to offer a motion of amendment to see if that garners any support with this motion.
Well, why don't we take a vote on the motion that's pending?
I can't add an amendment if you take a vote on the motion.
Well, you can make a new motion if you'd like.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Sean, I'll have your call roll.
Commissioner Aaronz.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion fails?
Technically, your motion is.
No, the motion fails. The resolution required four votes. So did you have an amendment you wanted to make?
No, I would offer a motion similar to what was just failed, that the green site be removed and the necessity to get something done, that the green site be removed and that we propose that it be on this site and/or to any property adjacent to this site that can be acquired. That is my motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair. It's evident that we do, definitely on the courts from everyone, that we need to get something done. I present this motion to hopefully garner enough support that we can move forward and take care of the immediate needs. I think it can be done in this vicinity or on the property. And without the jail attached to it, and we don't have to expend that expenditures for a green site without the idea that we are gonna have a jail with it. I don't see the urgency of it now. So I hope that there will be support for this so that we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I will say I cannot support that, simply because if recollection serves me, the cost of a standalone jail as opposed to a courthouse was an additional twenty million dollars, today's dollars. So for that reason, I can't support it. I also can't support the use of eminent domain to take up businesses in downtown Canton or other households, as I know that that's been something that's been discussed as well, to make room for the needs of the county. So I will not be able to support that. If there's no further discussion, public, I would allow input on this agenda item.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Commissioner Poppins.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Poppins, if you built here, you'd be building on land that the county already owns, correct, on the front side?
That would be the prime area, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would ask that a survey be put out to see if there is adjacent landowners that are willing to sell. I do, too, do not support doing eminent domain. But if there are property owners that are willing to, that would be conducive to our needs, I think we should survey that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other input from the public or the commission, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Commissioner Landine.
No. That motion also fails. So with that.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Bill, would you, would you explain to the commission and to the public, if this commission does nothing, what the court can do or the court can provide? You know, we heard about the nuclear option, and I don't know. I'd just like to have that aired out so everybody would know that if we done, if we do nothing, what will happen?
As much as you have a crystal ball in what you're comfortable saying.
As best you can say, because we are not addressing the needs of the court. We're not providing them. We can provide them with this room and the multipurpose room downstairs. And that can maybe Band-Aid for a year or a year and a half. But what happens if this commission does not do anything at all?
I can't address what the court system or any other office in the building may do. I can tell you what options there are. Normally, this is legal advice, and I would give it to you in executive session. But if the board wants me to address it, I will do it out in the open, but.
I'd like to, because I think the time is to be out in the open.
I'm gonna defer to counsel on how you wanna handle it. Commissioner Schmidt.
I will talk about it in a very general context.
Thank you.
There are multiple avenues that it can be addressed. One, there's an obligation by statute for the commission to go ahead and meet the space needs for multiple offices in the courthouse. One would be the court system, State's Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Auditor's Office, Treasurer's Office, I believe Director of Equalization. And so that's a statutory requirement that there is sufficient or adequate space. There are different methods. One would be, there could be a referral by the public if it isn't being met. Two, there could be a writ of mandamus if somebody wishes, one of the offices wishes to sue the commission for failure to perform a statutory duty. A writ of mandamus is an action in which the courts are asked to order the official to perform its official duties. So that's one avenue that could take place. There are other legal avenues that you could for suits. People get creative, so there's lots of options. But in the end, what you're looking at is that if the courthouse issues aren't addressed, it trickles down to the other offices. And it's going to affect the Sheriff's Office. It'll affect the State's Attorney's Office. All of us currently are experiencing a lack of space, and we are working around that, and we will continue to do that. But at a certain point in time, we can't function unless we have the necessary space. And so when you start to talk about the courthouse, I mean, at the moment, I've told you I don't have an office upstairs. We have three more employees coming. I have no place, Mr. Wallman has no place to put them. The Sheriff's Office has filled their location. So while the emergency is about where we're at with the court system, because you've heard we are occupying all of the courtrooms, we're quickly reaching the point where workarounds for all of the offices are becoming extremely difficult. So what the court system may or may not do is up to them. But legally, you have a responsibility to provide the space. And so hopefully, we won't get to the point that we'll find out what's going to happen when all the offices do not have sufficient space or the ability to perform their functions because they don't have any working space. So that would be the general apocalyptic view of things, is that nothing gets done and that somebody has to go to the court systems for relief. And so how they would do that, I can't speculate. There's too many options. But that's where it's gonna wind up if nothing's done.
Does anybody have an answer to the question? If, if we built on this site, how many people and how much square footage would be displaced during that project? I'm looking at Tegra and Henry Carlson. While they're figuring that out, I think we might take a ten-minute recess. Thank you. Back on this discussion about courthouse expansion, but I'd like to get some of these other things on the agenda taken care of. Next item would be a letter of support for the Regional Juvenile Justice Center. That letter is in your share file. I would like a motion that the chair be authorized to sign that letter of support. It's not a commitment of any sort.
Madam Chair, I'd offer that motion, but I will have some discussion on it.
Okay, I've got a motion. Is there a second? Motion and second. Discussion?
Just so the public understands what's going on with the Juvenile Detention Center. It's in need of replacement or major modifications. The controlling body, Minnehaw County, is looking at replacing it. We will have a commitment, if we stay in it, for paying for that. The initial number was plus or minus three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year on top of our annual usage fee. But that has not been set in stone. But those were the preliminary numbers, just for the public's knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to second that issue. Just so the public understands, the way we would be paying, Minnehaw County would change. It would go towards this flat daily rate. And that flat daily rate is going to increase. But that increase would be less than under the method described in the current joint powers agreement. So there is potential for some cost savings here as a result of it, even though it does change, even though the rate fee does increase.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Sean, may I call the roll?
Do we need public input on this?
Oh, my bad. Yep, definitely. Any public input on the Regional Juvenile Justice Center? All right. If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Then we need board action approving, authorizing the chair to execute the renewal of the Union County jail contract. Is somebody gonna come up and talk to us about that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here that time of year for the 2023 renewal of the Union County.
Can you just date your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chad Brown. I'm the chief deputy at the Sheriff's Office.
Thanks, Chad.
So looking for approval and the chair's signature to approve this contract. The contract's going up from sixty-five dollars a day to eighty dollars a day per prisoner. So that's about the only change in the contract.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Any discussion? Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. We need board action to award a bid on a bridge project. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. November twenty-second, we had a bid opening for a 2023 bid, bridge project. This is for two structures down south, and we're looking to award those bids today. I'll read off the bids, and then I'll start with the low bid. Recommendation here from the engineers to award to the low bid. So first bid was Midwest Contracting with a bid of four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Next bid was BX Civil and Construction with a bid of five-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fifty cents. Next bid is Six-O-Five Companies with a bid of five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Next bid was Bacchus Excavation and Underground with a bid of six-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, eight-hundred dollars. And the last bid was Rungy Enterprises with a bid of seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. The engineer's cost estimate on this, I believe we're about, what was it?
It was.
Six forty-four. So really good price on this.
All right. With that, can I get a motion to approve the Midwest Contracting LLC bid?
So move. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Public input?
Public input. Still getting. Still getting better at that. Trying to anyway. Any public input on this bid project? All right, if not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And item six on our agenda, have our treasurer here to talk to us today about that?
Debbie Black, Treasurer. I'm requesting an, an approval for a payment plan for a homeowner in Lennox at outlet to Lennox Outlet 33 and south five feet of Outlet 32. They want, the payment plan would include the 2020 taxes and the current 2021 taxes. They would like to make $424 payments monthly for two years.
All right, for the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Public input?
Oh, gosh. Am I so bad at that? Any public input on this agenda item? All right. Sean, go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Item seven on our agenda, we need to set an annual work session meeting.
Good morning. Toby Brown with Planning and Zoning Department. Just here to request your attendance at an annual work session with the Planning Commission. Their request is for the upcoming meeting in December. So that's December 19th at 5:00. That is a work session.
You said December 19th at 5:00?
Correct.
And am I buying the pizza this time or the pop?
I owe you this time. You'll buy the pop, I'll buy the pizza.
And that's going to be right after our meeting?
That'll be at the beginning of the Planning Commission meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah, 5:00 PM.
All right.
At what time?
5:00 PM in here, yeah. So again, that's the annual work session where staff will present the demographics from permits for the year, statistics. And then there is some items that the Planning Commission would like to discuss with you as well. Otherwise, just have to have you set that, and we'll put it on the calendar. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to set that for December 19th?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll? Or public input on that agenda item?
That is my policy.
I, it's my policy that I wanted.
Did you break this?
I did. And I'm terrible. Okay. I don't see anybody wanting to talk on this agenda item, so Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we have a contract negotiation. You just need authorization on that bill?
Yes.
And what are you negotiating?
This is a potential new title company coming into Lincoln County, and they're requesting to set up in the Registered Deeds Office and go ahead and make copies of all of our records. And so we are going to send them out an offer letter that's consistent with our policies as far as allowing people to copy data and stuff. And since they're a certified plant already, we typically offer for digital copies, 20 cents a page. We're making some additional offers concerning the microfiche, which if they would allow us to have a digital copy of it, we would offer them a reduced cost of 5 cents per copy and allow them some access and to set up in our, the Registered Deeds Office. And since they would be using some space and some electricity, we're going to ask for $50 a week to cover the costs for any of the utilities that they would be using. So if the commission was comfortable with that, I've already discussed that with Becky, and she's here today, we would send that offer off to the company and begin the discussions.
All right, any questions by the commission for staff? All right, if not, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, like a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right. Bill, can you see how much more time those guys need? I'm going to go ahead and move forward with our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to come on up and speak, now would be the time.
Pass this out real quick. Thank you. I got two here.
All right. My name's Ned Horstedt. I live at 27058 South Southeastern Avenue, Sioux Falls. I'm the CEO and co-founder of 605 Cannabis, which is a vertically integrated medical cannabis facility authorized by the county and the state. We're right off the Canton exit. What I shared with the commission today is two state statutes. I know when the initial Lincoln County ordinance was put together, they landed on a $50,000 application fee. That ordinance was, at that time, was also written when recreational was up in the air with Amendment A. Now we're faced with a situation where there are just over 5,000 patients in the state, meaning the $50,000 fee due to Lincoln County for each business would cost patients roughly $10 per patient for every patient in the state. When you add the property taxes that our company pays to the county, it's about $20 per patient in the entire state, regardless of whether they live here or in Belfush or anywhere between. So state statute 3420G60 covers local licensing of medical cannabis establishments. It says a local government may require a medical cannabis establishment to obtain a local license permit or registration to operate, and may charge a reasonable fee for the local license permit or registration. Elsewhere in Medical Cannabis Law 3420G72, it talks about rules promulgation. Section 10 says that the state may establish a reasonable application and renewal fees. And subsection A under that is application fees for medical cannabis establishments may not exceed $5,000. So that's what the state can charge. I would be curious to get the actual cost from the county on what it costs to do the application process and fee and everything. There was a lot of unknowns at that point, fear that we would be costing a lot of law enforcement resources. We have not had any of that yet, and I don't know that any of the businesses here in Lincoln County have. So I would like to have members of the public understand what the actual cost to the county is and take this into account because this is really, really difficult for every business in the county to cover this, given the economics of it. So I don't know if I can ask questions here, but I'd be curious if there's been a cost assessment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and speak?
Madam Chair and commissioners, my name is Linda Montgomery. I'm from Fairview, South Dakota. I'm retired military. I have served three years in the Army Reserve. I retired as a master sergeant. I took an oath when I signed up for the Army Reserve. That oath is I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States against enemies, foreign and domestic. You told me to revisit the public comment policy, and I did. However, it was written after the fact, after we had been discussing CVRs and getting public information that was blocked from us. The Auditor's Office blocked us from seeing public information, so we had no recourse but to seek counsel. That being said, we went to a hearing when that judge said something that, that you didn't agree with. You went and found private counsel.
Ma'am, this is pending litigation that you were talking about. We've always had this public, as far back as I can remember, we do not speak about pending litigation in the public comment section of a meeting. So this is the third time. This is the third time that I've addressed this with you. So if you would have something else you would like to talk about that doesn't relate to the pending litigation, now would be the time to do so.
Okay, and I will do that.
If you want to continue down that path, I am going to cut you off again.
And your policy that you wrote, as far as I'm concerned, when you wrote that and everybody okayed it, you took the Constitution and ripped it up. My ability for free speech was impaired. You also censored us, put us at the back of the bus and gave us three minutes instead of five. And you wrote rules. We had been discussing these things forever before you wrote these rules. And I find it that you have taken this Constitution that people have died for and tore it up and spit on it. There's a South Dakota flag up there with an emblem on it that says, "Under God, People Rule." You might as well take that down also. Thank you.
All right, anybody else from the public wish to come up and speak? Morning.
Morning. I'm Sean Tornow. I live in Sioux Falls, and I'm here to just briefly address this public comment policy that I've, that I've read, and I've now seen how you implement. And I would tell you that with 35 years in practice of law, about 20 years in the public sector, that I, I would respectfully request this commission, short of judicial review, to review and revise your policies in this regard. Pursuant to SDCL 125-1, you can develop policies that provide for public comment. I understand you've moved them to the end of the meeting to try to prohibit or to disincentivize, if you will, folks from coming and speaking to you. But as, as I see my clients and others that have addressed this issue, where you're running afoul of state statute is that you cannot limit public comment so much as to provide for no public comment. When I see that you've developed these seven, at least seven issues that supposedly cannot be talked about in public comment, that's just flat out wrong. And it, it serves the purpose of providing for no public comment. For instance, when you say subjects discussed in executive session cannot be talked about or matters within the attorney-client privilege, understand, you hold the privilege. I know we have a couple of attorneys here. You, you should understand that. You hold the privilege. And any commission member can waive that privilege. So to ask the public to not speak to matters that you could potentially waive the privilege on is nonsensical. To, the most nonsensical provision is to say that any subject talked about in executive session can't be talked about here. How on earth would the public know what was talked about in executive session? Nonsensical. And again, you've made it so broad, overly broad, that it, it in essence provides for no public comment. And, and for the chair or others to cut off public comment is improper and wrong. And again, shy of judicial review, I, I would ask you as a citizen of Sioux Falls to review that and revise it immediately.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to come up and speak? Are you guys ready? All right, anybody, any more public comment that anybody would like to bring forward? All right, if not, I'm going to go ahead and circle back to our discussion regarding courthouse expansion. I had asked a question prior to the break, and I know that you needed to run some numbers and put some things together. Have you had an opportunity to do that?
Yes. Hey, Dick Strasberg with Tegra. So to respond to the question of what is the disruption and how would it actually work to add on to this courthouse? I think if we look at that, and there's been a lot of discussion on this. We, it's fair to say the last 10 minutes, we kind of summarized, you know, probably a few hundred hours of study on it. So first, the big issue here is, the obvious one is disruption. And what, what does it take to keep this facility, you know, the current services that are being provided in this building and the courthouse operational during the process? And it's the analogy I threw out there, it might be a worn-out analogy, but this, this is literally doing mechanic work on an airplane during a flight. Your courts have to continue going. Your courts continue to go with all the things that are required within a court. That means the security, the IT, everything, and everything related to it. Court services, clerk of courts, the whole thing, everything has to continue to operate. So now we're going to tear down the existing courthouse. We're going to tear that down, and it's about 20,000 square feet. So I think it's fair to say that we've got to disrupt 20,000 square feet within this building to have the services brought into this building. You know, some, you know, doing renovation work and so on. There's also an additional, the work that was planned in this courthouse, which was roughly 10,000 square feet, which means that it's a disruption. So we can do all that, but there's a big element on that, and that's time. That's going to push everything out, puts everything out. And we, we're just going through the estimate on it, it's probably about a year, which just inflation alone is $2.5 million if you figure 5% in inflation. If we could get it down to 5%, I think a lot of people would probably be happy. So it's, you know, there's a big number with the inflation. That's what the real issue is here, is, is doing it now to, you know, with the costs involved. Then we've got the whole, the whole cost of the actual construction, of renovating, you know, a room like this that we're in right now to make it into a courtroom. You know, that, that's conceivable how we can do that. Getting the second one is a lot tougher. And also the need right now isn't for three courtrooms, it's four, if we look ahead in the next year or so. So that's, that's, you know, that's, that's a big issue. Then if we look at, at, you've got the cost and everything related to the disruption. And after being in this business for the number of years that I have been, I can tell you, it's possible, but it's a logistical nightmare to keep everything operational and then build it out. And it's throwaway money. Everything you spend that we just talked about here is throwaway money. You're going to build out space that, and you're going to build out other space for the people to get moved out of this building during the process. Find the space, build it out for them, get technology, you know. 25 years ago, it wasn't as big a deal, but it's technology and everything that's involved. And, and in this building, you've got the, you know, the big security issue for the court. So a, a lot involved, just from a pure disruption avoidance and, and that, the whole, how do you keep everything functioning? And the second I look at, which we looked hard at this, we've looked at, I think, every site that's conceivable around this property. Because it's the obvious thing to do, right? You've got the, this is where you've got, you know, some services right now. Let, let's expand it here. So they start looking at the property around here. And there is very few properties that are, that even to consider. Because if you look at the scale of what you need to do to build this out compared to what you, what, you know, you just look at what you need right now. And this should be an 80- to 100-year solution. This should not be something that's a Band-Aid. It should be something that when the, you know, the forefathers built the original courthouse here, they built that thing for a long time, and it's still here. And it serves the, the needs for, you know, 100 years. So this building should do the same thing. So, so it, it's pretty short-sighted to look at this thing on saying that we can put it here and really meet the needs of the future. Maybe we can meet the needs right now, but as far as adding on, pretty tough. Looking at the, you know, it, it would mean that there's never a regional jail, local jail, or otherwise. I mean, it's, there's not room to add on here. So then we look at, at, at the needs, thinking long-term on this. It's easy to look at the next 10, 20 years. But that's not what you're building here. As a county, you should build a building that's long-term. And I've been in the business long enough to see what happens when they're short-sighted thinking. And it's going to cost the taxpayers more money. So the idea, you're landlocked, you're landlocked here from a big-picture perspective. Then I, you know, point out the other one that's obvious this morning with the jury trial going on, parking. I parked a few blocks away. And I'm not sure how that goes over with all the neighbors. Having parking into the neighborhoods like you have right now. And that's just with one jury trial going on. So I think the parking is a legitimate thing. Looking long-term, and that's probably the thing I'd really push out on this is, you know, we went into this project thinking that, you know, there's probably a solution to adding on to this thing somehow. Somehow, you've got to be able to add on, you've got to be able to make use of what you got here. We looked hard at the existing courthouse. Can we renovate it? Obvious question. The cost of renovating that building and compared to building it new, it's substantially less to build it new. Then if you look at the other factor that's the obvious reason on making a decision now to go on a site, let's just call it elsewhere other than right here, is, you know, I know Commissioner Poppins has brought this up, you've brought it many times, the thing of making a decision now versus making it later and the cost of inflation. Because this is not getting, this isn't going to go down in cost if you delay the decision. It's going to go up substantially. So the thing of adding on this project, if we were to just look at dollars on it, we've got a number that's somewhere between $6 to $8 million more of throwaway cost. If you're going to, you know, do the whole logistic challenge you have of tearing down the courthouse here, moving some people out of it. It takes about half the building, right? This building, you move out about half of the people here because you've got to create somewhere around 30,000 square feet to make this work temporarily. So now you're going to move out half of the people in this building someplace and build out space from there, build up the room for the courts, then build the new building, then move them all back in to the new building, then renovate it back to get, so it would work for what you've got. So, you know, for those reasons, we just really believe strongly after being, you know, I can say we've, this isn't a, we had a 10-minute break there, but there were, we have labored over these numbers. And I mean, as all of you, as commissioners, you've done the same thing. You've tried to just wring your hands, how do you do what's best for the taxpayers? That's what you're all trying to decide, is how do you do what's best for the taxpayers? Long-term, what's best? And our recommendation is to build on a greenfield site, not build on this building, add on to this building, and do it right. Do it right so, you know, 40, 50 years from now, people are going to look at this thing and say, you know, they were thinking ahead and they did it right. So going to a greenfield site, and I'd say, call it yet to be determined because there are several sites that could be considered yet. And I think that would move the project forward to go to a greenfield site and, you know, abandon the idea of adding on to this building. Because in our professional experience and opinion here, it doesn't make sense. So that's what we'd encourage you to do, is approve something for a greenfield site today. And we move forward and work together to find out what the best site is and push the project forward. And we're available for questions.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions?
Just clarification for the publics. The greenfield site proposal 1 and 2, with jail, without the jail, were the courts equivalent? You had a 4 and 2 on option 2. Was 4 and 2 attached with the option 1 as well?
Well, you know, every option had, we had 13 options.
So on the millions that we're looking at on option 1, how many courtrooms did that get?
You're talking about the one that's a standalone greenfield site? Is it option 3 as you're referring to?
What is proposed today, the 111?
Yes, yes, they are the same.
It's 4 and 2 and 4 and 2?
4 and 2 and 4 and 2. But I'd remind you again that this is looking for the long term. This court, let's call it the courts building that's being proposed is a three-story building, roughly 24,000 square feet per floor, and it will accommodate, the future is 12 courts. So let's go from the top down. Top floor has four courts built out initially with space for two more to be added. Floor 2 is the exact same floor plate. It would be used for state's attorney initially, about half of it. And then as the courts grow, as state's attorneys grow, both would expand into the vacant space next to it. Then as the county grows, long-term, then the state's attorney moves out and the whole thing becomes a courthouse. So this is designed with a long term in mind, that this would be a 12-court courtroom building. And that's the vision on it. And economically, you don't need the 12 right now. We're told you absolutely need four right now and then have it so you could expand for an additional two. So that all makes sense. And then if the county doesn't expand the way that it's projected to, for whatever reason, you've still got a very solid building. It's a solid building and it's planned for the future because I don't think there's many people who would argue that the next, you know, 25 to 50 years, this county is going to expand. And it's set up to do that. So that's the beauty of doing that. And also, you've got the ability to add on state's attorney, add on other county services that may be needed over the next, you know, 50 years, add on a jail if that's what we're to come to. So we think that's, you know, building it with that in mind is our recommendation.
Anybody else have any questions?
And what you just mentioned, Dick, initial estimated cost then is what?
That's a $54 million option.
I just wanted to double-check.
Yes.
Other questions?
In your, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Dick, in your outline, what you're saying is that you're really building for the future. And when you cut everything down, you've got an issue here of whether to provide for courtrooms, state's attorney, all the other issues that are going with a growing county, with one exception. You don't have the jail connected right away, but it's built for a jail to be added on conveniently. I mean, it's built with the idea that one will, if necessary, be built on.
Correct. And if you build the jail or not, the court building would still, it would stay the same, yes.
To build out a whole floor for six courtrooms on the greenfield site, would that, how much did that add?
To build six and so forth.
To just build six, even if we didn't have shell space immediately? I mean, one floor could still have shell space. I'm just wondering if you put that configuration together and what the cost was?
We don't have it handy, but we can tell you this, that going from four courts and adding two more on the same floor when you already got the shell is probably a couple million bucks.
That's what my memory served me, was a couple.
And the thought on that is just as managing dollars here, you build out the shell and, you know, the jury assembly and everything that's needed, court services, you build that out now. And then as the county expands, you've got additional revenue that's coming in as it expands. And that will likely track pretty close to what the needs are. So you'd have the additional revenue to build out the additional courtrooms. And spending the least dollars, we looked at the solutions here. What's your, you've got to do something. What's the least-cost solution you can do? That you're looking at now, and we believe this is it.
The unfortunate part of your proposal is you're talking about operating funds that are, we're desperate to need to keep the other functions of the courthouse moving. This is our opportunity to pay for it and bond for it to get it done. We're looking at additional funds that have to be out of our general operating expenditures to pay for expansion of the J D C facility up in Minnetonka County. So that scenario unfortunately doesn't work unless there's an opt-out coming because we're already operating on thin paper for a lot of these departments. So I agree with the idea, but I've unfortunately been here long enough to know that that's not going to be feasible without making sacrifices in other departments. So I believe it's, this is the opportunity. I trust the taxpayers to understand what we've been doing. We have, obviously, since 2001, the public, if they go back in our archives, can see, this is not new. We've been talking about it, talking about it, talking about it. The cost of just in the last two years exponentially shot up. Unless there's an agreement of a majority of this board that will never have a jail, it's the opportunity to do it, and it's now the time. And if we're not going to do the jail, having a separate campus is not something I'm inclined to support.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Madam Auditor.
What's the cost to the taxpayers between the two sums of money that we have? Can you give us a rough figure on what the average would be on a $300,000 house?
Tom, you got the paper in here with you?
I mean, I can sit here and dance all day. I just want to know what the impact on the taxpayer is going to be.
Right, so Tom Grimmon from Collier Securities, Sioux Falls. So a $300,000 house, basically, the two greenfield sites, the option 3 or the 50-plus million, you're looking at $93.60 a year. Given where the valuation is right now, $7.80 a month. Or on the, with the jail option, $195 a year, $16.28 a month.
Tom, can you put that under the camera there?
Yes.
Somebody's got the power here.
Thank you.
And that's computing 2% growth?
That's 2% growth only through the first 10 years because that's, I think at that time, you know, the growth projections were that you would need to, you know, do the other two courtrooms at that time. So anyway, we just stopped the growth at 10 years. I have one more comment, Commissioner Landin, if I could make. It's a little off-topic, but it was brought up earlier. And since I finally made it up here. State legislate, when we're talking big numbers, a lot of people like to defer to a vote. But somebody actually brought up on the commission about how efficient South Dakota is. We're a strong republic. I've been reminded of that over time. We're a strong republic, meaning we're a strong representative type of state. And we are an efficient state. And way back when the Constitution was done, they created language, the seven, the seven series, or whatever you want to call it, chapter seven, for county law that allowed for counties to enter into lease purchases, which allowed them to do projects like this without having to go to a vote. And the legislatures way back when they first implemented that saw that as an efficient process. It has a referral piece to it. So if you're doing something that the public doesn't want, they only need 5% of the public to gather signatures, then go hang out at the mall and gather signatures, and force a vote. That's the efficient process I think someone was talking about, is that they had the foresight. And someone would say, well, back then, we weren't talking about $100 million. Well, you had to put it in terms back then. It was still 5% of whatever the valuation was you could have outstanding in your county at any one time. Right now, in Lincoln County, at $8.9 billion, you could have over $400 million in outstanding debt. You guys nowhere near that. So the idea that there's a lot of debt outstanding, maybe there isn't. And even if you did $100 million, you're still not even close to your total debt limit. So I just, I kind of throw that out there. Some people think everything should be voted on. I think the statutes have been put in place that allow for that for counties and cities and even schools to be able to act. And then if the public is not in favor of it, an avenue by which to force a vote. Anyway, it was a little off-topic, sorry, but I wanted to point that out.
And Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just for the public, these numbers do not include the fact that bonds are going to be coming off when our annex is paid for and as well, a few years down the road when the highway shop is paid for, correct?
That is correct.
These are true for this whole project.
That is correct. And we haven't taken into account, and I know this is a little heartburn for some folks, but how much it's going to cost for you to operate your jail? And this is not my avenue, you can talk to Dick, but how much it's going to cost to operate a jail as opposed to pay somebody else to operate a jail and ship your prisoners there? We haven't taken into account any of those numbers at all. So, I mean, you're just going to be able to do it more efficiently. Is it going to save you money? Is there going to be additional money there in the general fund? Possibly. It's not going to be a one-for-one, obviously. But, you know, throw that out there, too.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Grimmon? Or anybody else for that matter?
Tom, not to the, just a comment. You bring up a point that we have explored on, I'm going back to a jail, as to renting space or owning space. Having talked with Sheriff Milstead countless number of times, he indicates that we're getting a good deal because we don't have to deal with all of the minutia that goes on from prisoners every weekend, filing reports and all the other situations. What concerns me is the fact that if you look at our penitentiary, they have lost about a third of their workforce because of their salary situation. And now they're up to $25 to $27 an hour. And the competition for working in an incarceration facility will be there. Now, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but you bring up a good point would be to find out just how much it would cost per prisoner per day if we rented or we had our own facility. So that if you had to explain to the public, hey, we're going to break even or make money, that would be a sense. Because we've got a heck of an education that we have to do to the public. Because when you start talking about taxes of $100 yearly or $200 a year, I mean, somewhere along the line, they're going to ask the question, why? And if you look at the taxpayers in Sioux Falls, they ask you, what services do we get? This is what I hear. I'm not trying to manufacture any of this stuff. It's sure, we want to make the best decision possible. We want to move the agenda. We want to get this monkey off our back. We want to do the right thing. But at the same time, we've got to educate the public on why we're doing this. And if you're only talking taxes, you know what box they're going to check.
All right, is there anyone that wants to make any motions on agenda items one or two from earlier this morning that we think we can get some consensus on? Or are there any amendments that we'd like to, you know, seen made and bring that back for another meeting? But I don't even, you know, my thoughts are not to even spend the time to do that if we can't get some consensus on this board.
Madam Chair, I have no other motion at this time.
Okay, anybody else?
Madam Chair, would it be on a blind if we asked for an executive session to discuss this among the commissioners?
I would not support that.
Do you have legal questions or what are your?
I'm just talking, trying to figure out where we can find consensus on this thing.
We can do that here in our public meeting.
Madam Chair, questions or comments concerning the jail?
Go ahead.
There's definitely been a lot of discussion about operating or renting a jail. The thing that's always sits in the back of my mind is it may appear to be a good situation today, but there's nobody that's going to guarantee to this board, whoever's sitting here, the taxpayers of Lincoln County. We saw that circumstance happen to us when they ran into a situation, and I refer to Minnetonka County, when they had a facility that burnt. There was no, hey, you know, we've got a situation, work with us, it's, you're out. And when the day comes and when they are full and/or can't find enough people to open up that next facility, I have that same concern. And it's not in a position that I want to leave this seat ever to the next generation to have to face that challenge. Nobody wants a jail. But we have a population of 70,000 people probably in this county now. Unfortunately with that, there's
Unfortunately with that, there's an increasing number of crime. I have been victim of crime in this county. It's not pleasant to be a victim, I will tell you that, if you have not had that opportunity. But in the system, we can talk about reform, and we can talk about a lot of things to try to keep people out of jail. But in our system, there's one deterrent, and that's a jail. And we must have a facility to give that deterrent, otherwise we're chasing the same criminals and same criminals and same criminals over and over again. And if we, we propose, go with the proposal of four and two courtrooms on a greenfield site, we're not gonna have this facility up and running before we're back to the taxpayers anyway, saying, we gotta have more courtrooms. We gotta finish the two courtrooms. We have an opportunity, be upfront with the public, it's not pleasant. If there was a twenty-year-plus guarantee with Minnetonka County, I'd change my mind. But they're not offering that. I have not heard of that, at least, from anybody or them. So we have to face the unpleasantry of making the decision, and if it is up to us to inform the people that maybe don't deal with this on a day-to-day basis. This isn't something fun, it's nothing I wanna vote for, it's nothing I wanna raise my taxes for. But for the next generation, it's what we have to do today, because we are not the same county, even back when oh-one, when we talked about jails. And we sure the heck are not back to sixty-six when I was born. So I, I hope that we can come to consensus that, as unpleasant as it is, it's time to do it. Thank you.
And I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. One thing that is obviously not present today are people and the public coming in and telling us not to build a jail. I haven't seen any, haven't heard any, haven't gotten any phone calls telling me not to build a jail. So I think it's needed, I think it's necessary, I am in support of that. I think the public can take this to a vote if that's what they choose to do. Frankly, I just haven't seen it, from where I sit, that there is really an opposition to us doing this, as long as we've been talking about it, and as much data as we've gathered and put out there with the public meetings, which by and large, were not highly attended. And the folks that did appear at those meetings, they said, do it, do it once and do it right, don't come back to us again. So, I mean, I'm on board with building this jail, and I wish I could get the consensus of, from other commissioners to do that. I don't fully understand why we can't. I look at the monthly cost, you know, three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, for somebody that's living in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, I think Netflix costs about that much, monthly. So I think public safety, yeah, Netflix might even be more. But I just, I'm putting public safety, and I turn on the news, and what do you see? Now, I'm not saying this is our court system, but courts are letting people out of jail, they're bonding them out, crimes are being recommitted, it's just a revolving door. I don't want Lincoln County to turn into that, but I can see where it might. If a judge has to look to keeping one offender in jail versus another, who do they let out? Who do they bond out and on what conditions? And are they gonna be back? So I, I am supportive of, of doing the jail and doing it once and doing it right. And I would like to hear from, you know, we've heard a lot this morning, but I just don't understand why other commissioners can't get on board with this, because it is referable, if the public chooses to do that. So, anyway.
Madam Chair, you're indicating, yeah, we had poor attendance. True. But I remind you that eighty percent or plus of our population resides in the city of Sioux Falls. And I would venture a guess that none of them are aware of what we're deliberating right here today. They have no idea. How did they know? How do they have, because there's not an interest, we have no way of communicating. It's not necess, it's a real issue on to try to get down to those individuals and explain to them the details of what you're talking about. What will get their attention, though, is if you put a couple of hundred dollars under taxes. That will get their attention, I'll guarantee you. So we can make and, and run around and, you know, it's kinda like, why can't I vote for a jail? I'm not saying I can't vote for a jail, but I'm saying we're not releasing prisoners right now. But why aren't we addressing the most immediate need that we heard about, to brought this thing to the attention, was we didn't have enough, we didn't have enough courtroom space? Well, all of a sudden, the courtroom space is not the issue, the issue is the jail. The jail, we're not putting people on the street, we do have a contract with them. Will we need one in the future? We can argue around that all day long. But the issue to me was to take care of courtrooms, because we weren't having enough. Hell, we were not putting anybody. Well, we've put that aside now, and now we're debating on a jail issue. Well, hey, what's the most immediate thing we gotta do? That is to provide courtrooms. I thought the greenfield site was an excellent choice. I thought what they, what was presented to us was a building for the future. We addressed every need we had, with one exception, and that was a jail. So we're sitting here today saying, well, if we're, we're gonna throw the courtroom situation to the secondary, and the jail becomes the primary one. The jail, ladies and gentlemen, still costs you a ton of money, and it does impact taxpayers. And you say it's referable. Well, is it referable? Yes, it is, if people want to initiate that. And if they did that, then we could have a vote. So instead of doing that, why don't we just refer the damn thing and let people decide whether they wanna spend fifty-four million dollars on a greenfield site, or they wanna spend a hundred and thirteen million dollars and build a jail? Let them decide.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. If not, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Any commissioners have reports they'd like to make today?
Madam Chair, as a point of personal privilege, I wanna say happy birthday to my grandfather, Swere Erins. Today is December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and he turns one-hundred-and-one years old today.
Oh, great.
So I wanna say happy birthday to him here in public.
Thank you for that. Any other commissioners have reports they'd like to make? All right. If not, I just wanted to point out, I was contacted, there's an, just informational purpose, there's an Alzheimer Support Service, it's a free service that assists Lincoln County families who have loved ones with Alzheimer's disease or dementia. There's a free search tool and database of Alzheimer care facilities and other information that may be helpful if anybody's dealing with that. You can certainly go to their website, it's AlzheimerSupport.com, and utilize the services that are available there, too. You and I was asked to bring that to, to everybody's attention. Any other commissioner reports? All right. If not, any need for executive session?
Good job.
He's getting up, I'm assuming so.
The, there was a negotiated contract with the union that has been brought to the commission. There is a notice for executive session concerning that, if you wish to discuss it. Otherwise, I'm asking for a vote on this, because we either need to ratify it, or we need to go back and negotiate with the union at this point. So if anybody has any questions about the, or comments about it, and you wanna discuss it, then we can.
I'll ask for an executive session for negotiations on contract.
All right.
And just to, I second that.
Thank you.
And the question I have, Madam Chair, is, when, or for Mr. Golden, sorry. When you say we need a vote on it, I, I assume we can do that next week after we get some questions answered?
It's up to you when you wanna schedule that vote. I went ahead and put on the agenda, so it's possible today. If you don't wish to do it, then we can always do it a different way.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you didn't mean like it needs to be done immediately today, this minute.
I think it's a sooner better.
Yeah.
It is always at the commission's.
Yeah. No, of course. Just wanted to clarify that.
All right. So I've got a motion to go into executive session under one-twenty-five, two-sub-three and sub-four, and I have a second.
Yep.
Is that correct, Commissioner Erins?
Yes, correct.
All right. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Out of executive session after I got the thumbs up. Second.
Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. So circling back, Mr. Golden wanted us to make a motion on our negotiated contract, union contract for the highway department.
Madam Chair, move for approval on negotiated contract with the highway department?
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll? Wait, public input.
Public input. We'll get used to it.
Any of the three?
Would anybody like to come up and give us some public input on this union contract? Okay, no takers. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erins?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Interesting. Uh, yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Madam Chair.
What?
There is, I would offer a motion to approve the surcharge for two freightliner trucks for the highway department.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Public input?
Yep. Any public input?
Still none.
If not? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Now I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any public input on our motion to adjourn? All right. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Have a good week, everybody.
Will do.